Yeah, well, findings, but I mean, what bears on the decision. Well, we're trying to collect findings of fact that if we know what we have to have in order to make a decision that we're looking for right now is missing facts.
Good.
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Goddett could provide an estimate to ZBA of how often he thought the Moore or family rented the property on a yearly basis.
Oh, Mr. Goddett could argue.
He's already sworn in.
Why do you think it doesn't matter?
Because no one can prove that the Moores did not have a one-year lapse. The fact that somebody says, "I know they rented it," doesn't mean there wasn't a one-year lapse in that period of time, which we're making relevant.
It also becomes an estimate of frequency, which in discussing, should this be grandfathered, frequency is very relevant to the conversation with regard to what Mr. Kellerman and his family would be able to do at this particular moment. And without any quantification to that, real quantification, we could presume and go back and take a look at when the house went on the market, because I would presume then that that house is, and talk to the agent, because that house is then probably not being rented, and that date would therefore establish a final cutoff, but we don't, we still would not know prior to that.
Well, but, yeah, but if the house goes on a market, that's not an, that doesn't make it an abandonment.
I didn't say that it was abandoned. I'm just stipulating that perhaps there's, at that particular moment, they stopped renting it on purpose, but...
I think we need to close the hearing before we start discussing these points.
Is he going to be permitted to say what he is?
I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
Can I make one clarification, please?
Yes.
I can guarantee you, as long as the Moores owned it, they rented it every year. They never had a year that they did not rent it in the fall, winter, or spring, because they didn't use the place except for like Thanksgiving or Christmas. I would have to say it was probably about 60 days a year they rented it at that point, because one woman rented it for two and a half months during one winter. But they did rent it every winter, every year, since they owned the place, I can tell you that.
Second amendment.
Okay. Mr. McKenna?
Mr. Goddett stated, and it's on the tape.
Can you hear?
Okay.
Yeah, come up to the microphone, sorry.
Paul McKenna, 36 years I have owned a place in Idaho's. Mr. Goddett stated, and it's on the tape, that Alan Davis never rented. Thank you.
And we're discussing Mr. Moore.
I realize that.
Okay, so, okay, so, but the question still is, for us, is relevant is whether the charter allows...
Yes.
Okay, so the question I'm asking right now is, what other findings of fact do we have that are relevant for our discussion?
I'm not the first.
Is there anything else?
Testimony, property, located.
Do you have under, possibly the same line as testimony, speaking to the fact that it was rented, that previous, the previous owners did not wish to give that information?
Oh, no, that's probably, okay, so that was the...
Oh, the Davises.
The Davises never rented.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, any other questions for the public?
Well, this association is unique to its, to itself. It is a short-term rental association. I think 11 out of 13 homes have always been used for this, so I don't know whether that plays into this, but the fact is it had its own governing...
What you're saying is it has a history of renting short-term.
I mean, I don't know how far back we need to go.
Okay, this is a question, that when, the Silver Shores, which, how many houses are in it and where is it exactly? I mean, it's Saxon Road and, and what was the name of the shore?
Off of Route 41.
Right, it's off of Route 41 to the east on the west shore of Silver Lake.
East shore, on the east side of the lake, right.
West side.
Oh, west side, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's the east side of 41.
You have to turn around.
13 units, if I'm correct.
Yeah, I believe it's 13 houses, and at some point, since that charter was made, everybody has rented the place at one time or another, but early on in their, like, career they're moving in, but as they get older, they start renting. Changes ownership, the renter, younger renter rents for a while, in 10 years, he probably won't be renting anywhere either. It just goes by, you know, their income and their stability to move there when they retire. That's what I'm going to do in a year or two, move there.
Of course, there is a relevance, renting is one thing, renting is long-term, for more than 30 days, is relevant, is not at all an issue. The question we're really wrestling with is short-term rentals that were handled in terms of, you know, motel-style renting, which is, okay. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Councillor.
Oh, yeah, Mr.
I just wanted to see, were all these houses built before the 1967 or were they added on?
Come up to the microphone or at least speak loudly, yeah.
John, Councillor, Mottles, Mass. The question I have is just, I just don't know, were all these houses built prior 1967 or were some of these built like during?
1987 is the relevant date for us.
And all of them were built before that?
That I don't know, but...
But they have to, to be built in there, they have to enter into the charter, so the charter timeline still applies.
Charter timeline applies, right, so, okay. All righty, so then...
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the public hearing is closed. For those that aren't familiar with our procedure, this is a public meeting, which means you're allowed to listen, but there's no further input from the public. The board will deliberate. So, does anybody disagree with me that my assessment is that what's critical here is whether or not this house is grandfathered?
That's the ultimate decision, is whether or not.
That's what we're aiming to...
Okay, so we're very clear in what we're trying to decide. If that's the case, then a critical question is whether or not the charter established in 1976, which predates the zoning ordinance...
Of 1987.
1987 carries precedence.
My opinion, no. Federal, state, local, and then our organizational charter, my opinion.
Okay, so, how you, well, tell me the implication, state...
The implication is that regardless of what the homeowner charter states, it is, does not supersede any rules that the town implies, regardless of the date.
I do find it interesting that if these rules were, the charter was established in 1976, the town comes along and in 1987 it establishes a zoning ordinance. That we can tell, or that I'm aware of, or that we see any evidence of, is that there was then no change to the charter, with regard to, there's more restrictive covenants within the zoning, so now we've got to take a look at it in our charter. It's as if nothing happened with the charter, that it was just sort of there, right, it's just there. It wasn't, I don't know that there were enforcements of things or whether there was any...
I think the charter assumed that they superseded any local law, but there's...
And I think that we...
Wish in 1976 it did, because there was no ordinance to define what you...
Fine, and this, I believe this was the attempt for them to define their own ordinances in order to conduct and, and regulate.
On that point, though, they, they don't seem to have been updated, because, I mean, it says you can't moor boat out in front of the beach. That's not their choice, that's the state's property.
So, I particularly would like more clarification from someone who's more adept legally than I am.
Okay, well, we, all right, well, that would be a reason for us to continue the case, to get clarification on, on this matter. I mean, because the reality is that once the charter was in effect and there were, you know, precedents established, then the question is whether or not the abandonment issue then becomes very relevant, because after 1987, if the house was not rented, then it's not, you can't claim grandfathering under the provisions of our ordinance, even if the charter existed.
Right.
Unless the charter, you know, has a, you know...
And on that, under that paragraph three of the restrictions where it talks about being able to rent, it doesn't define...
Doesn't define whether it's long or short.
Right.
But that probably also wasn't, I mean, we have to be careful...
It wasn't even a thought.
That's right, we have to be careful that we don't try to write today's understanding and challenges into the previous thing, so that wouldn't, they wouldn't have thought, they weren't thinking, somebody can rent it for a weekend or for a week. I'm quite sure that we can easily establish the fact that it was quite common for people to rent things for two weeks, because that's a standard vacation time. So I think we can assume that there were a number of rentals and permitted for periods less than 30 days, if they were permitted to rent.
At this point, we're going based solely on testimonies of people, though, wouldn't that, wouldn't that be...
Go ahead.
Not us doing our...
Due diligence on the...
Yeah, because, I forget who said it, somebody did say earlier, well, anybody can come up here and say anything for their buddy, and to be 100% fair, I mean, technically, we don't have, we only have an affidavit, we don't have any documentation about...
That's true.
It was just sworn to, we started renting February 23. Do you have anything to show us that? Well, I know that the previous owner rented, but, okay, they don't want to provide anything.
But they did provide, two witnesses had said that the...
That's true.
That the previous owner did rent.
Yeah.
So, but that was from 2015.
But in other cases...
Post 1987.
We've heard under these rules, we have required hard proof that those rentals have happened, tax records, insurance, binders...
Listings, anything.
Etc., we have nothing here other than second-hand testimony.
If, if they were renting 2015 to 2022, then they should have been paying rooms and meals taxes, isn't that publicly accessible information on the previous owner, I would assume?
Well, it depends.
I'm not 100% sure, I don't know.
I don't know how far back those records publicly go.
But they certainly go back to that time period.
2022?
Yeah.
I would, I would believe so.
Yes.
And I just want to clarify your point earlier, when you were talking about the abandonment issue. Were you saying that you would like to see proof between that first rental of February 23 and February 2022, to make sure that it didn't become abandoned during the sale period?
Correct. That, that there is not a time period, that because of the status of the home, that there isn't a time period where now the renting has ceased and it becomes a discontinuance? I don't, the term abandonment is not within that.
Hi.
No, but abandonment requires intent, and if the previous owner was renting and decided to sell the house and moved away, that, that doesn't establish, that doesn't create a hiatus, right? Because they rented up until they, until they moved, the owner bought it, you can, you could reasonably say that hiatus is simply a matter of business.
It's a byproduct of...
It's a byproduct of the selling. It's not, it's not, it's not a statement of intent to stop the rental. It is intent to stop the rental if the previous owner stopped renting the house completely a year before he sold it.
Right, and that's why I'm looking, that's why I was asking the question as to when did they, if they didn't stop until, regardless, I'm looking for the date for when that may have stopped.
Yeah, just, okay.
But I also agree that, this becomes very difficult when there is nothing specific, when there is nothing that, and I, there's nothing that concretely shows data for us. And I get that nobody, nobody expected to necessarily be in this position, so you wouldn't necessarily have access to all of those records, but, but the burden of proof, again, goes on the homeowner or on the petitioner in order to prove that, yes, I meet all the criteria for this particular aspect of what I'm trying to do, whether it be they come before us for a variance or a special exception or any other, any other request to the board, the committee, the burden of proof is on them to give us that information so that it makes, I don't want to say makes our job easy, but it gives us clear definition as to which way we're going.
Well, allows us to document the fact that we're making a decision in favor of the homeowner, which might be interpreted by others to be contrary to the provisions of our statutes.
Right.
Okay, so, all right, well, then my suggestion is that we list those things that we, we need in order to proceed, so one of the things we need is clarification on the relevance of the charter. The other thing, which I'm hearing several people say, is that, anyway, whoops. We need whatever could be provided, even if it's minimal, you know, tax record or public record of any kind, perhaps a second, second request to the previous owner for, you know, even this tax statement from the last year that they were, I don't know, anything, anyway, it would be helpful if we had any kind of hard data. Okay, so if we have those two things, are, do we need anything else?
No, those were critical.
Okay, so any kind of hard data whatsoever, and a clarification, which would be, clarification of the charter issue would be our responsibility, the data would be the responsibility of...
Mr. Kellerman.
Clarification of the relevancy, you mean?
Clarification of the relevancy, yeah, that's, we'll have to take care of that. Any other questions at the board?
Just one other comment.
Yeah.
In all of our discussions, we talked about the term commercial use.
Yes.
I looked up the discussion, the definition of commercial use.
Yeah. Wedges, you mean, sort of, or you mean from our...
No, this comes from a university...
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Commercial use is any reproduction or purpose that is marketed, promoted, or sold, and incorporates a financial transaction.
I object to that.
This is a public meeting, so...
I still get to object for the...
Oh, you don't.
And he's just reading a definition out loud.
I still get to object.
Noted. I don't know what else to do.
Yep, note Mr. Johnson's objection.
And I understand that several court cases have tackled that discussion of commercial and the definition when it, when it relates to short-term rentals. I understand the, the court's definition that this is not a commercial, it doesn't change the homeowner into a commercial entity, and I don't think any one of us or any one of our cases has actually stated that. I think what, what we are talking about is usage as opposed to purpose of the structure.
If, I mean, even the charter doesn't use the word commercial, it uses the word business.
Business.
Conducting business.
Right, which is different and is not, not necessarily linked to a commercial entity. I can be a homeowner and still conduct business as opposed to a commercial entity.
Yeah, so one of the issues we were dealing with, well, the primary issue here is whether or not this is grandfathered.
Right.
Right, if it's not grandfathered...
Then all those other questions...
Then the other questions all become relevant, but the question of commercial use, business use, et cetera, et cetera, is actually, those are secondary to this particular case. So let us clarify the question of whether or not we think this is reasonably grandfathered, and the only way we can do that is continue the case. Does anybody else have a, okay, can I entertain a motion to continue?
So will we.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
We need to move to continue the case to May...
May?
15.
May 15.
May 15.
I believe...
I think it's the 15th. Am I right?
May 15.
One, two, three, May 15.
May 15.
Here at Town Hall.
6:00 PM at Town Hall.
Lower level of Town Hall.
What was that, motion by Doug?
Doug, yes, by Doug.
Clarified by...
Seconded by George.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Okay, so we, we will continue this case and address the issues, and clearly from this, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Kellerman, if you can produce any kind of documentation, it would be, it would be to your benefit.
I understand that question.
Right. Okay, so let us have a 30-second interval just to collect our papers and get things back in order. Oh, yeah, okay.
And then we will continue with 2018. Yeah, 2318.
I didn't mean to ignore it, I just have a strength.
I'm just curious. Attorney Bolton's here, it probably would have been helpful if he was to give you an opinion on what you want.
If he can't make the 15, can an associate of his come and cover?
We have access, we have access to Attorney Bolton, in addition to outside of this as well.
So it may not even be necessary for him to be here.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, a lot of people talk about it, I mean, I got some fairly interesting reactions.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
And some of the funny stuff I had really lost because...
I'll, I'll give you that.
I was trying to...
I'll give you that, I'll write it up tomorrow morning like I normally do.
You've still got to vote, and I thought you can't, you can't...
You got me, I haven't listened to you in a while.
That's why I think we...
That's the only good thing about it, what I enjoy about going out to different homes and seeing different areas that I wouldn't otherwise have in one place.
Oh, God, nobody's coming down.
We would never have bought here.
Never have.
Right, and you would have missed that beautiful...
We do have a procedure over that says we don't start any new business after 9:00 o'clock, and we intend to finish all businesses at 10:00 p.m.
10:00 p.m. is pretty much the relative time for you to start.
Yeah, exactly. When this first, when these cases first rolled out about two years ago, I think we had 65 of them lined up, and we were looking down the barrel of a couple home managers and just passed the label.
That's what I have in the hearing. I didn't know it was called super truism.
Okay, we're going to get started here again. Okay, so Kate, you want to read the public notice for case 2318?
Case 2318, continued October 18, 2023, November 15, 2023, January 17, 2024, February 21, 2024, and March 2023. Given a decree of decision from Matt Johnson, Esquire, Final Order, Branch, PA, Ethan from Matthew Petty, and the District of East Guideline Way, tax number 204, Lot 48, determine whether or not your surface stance allowed for short-term rentals. Your name is John, I have a role of void, COVID-19 officer dated August 16, 2023, as to Article 4, Section 4, two of the Madison Sonic...
Okay, and all the abutters responded, or at least...
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, okay. Conflict of interest, Jake? No. Doug? No. No, no, no. Okay, no conflict of interest. Then I assume there's a waiver request here as well, since there's no dimensional issues, is that correct? Right, so, does anyone have a question about the waiver?
No.
Okay, then I...
Make a motion that we move to accept the request for waiver.
Okay, second? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay, so the waiver request is accepted. Anyone think there's regional impact with this particular? No?
No.
No. Okay. Would everyone who wishes to speak to this case, please stand? You've already been sworn in tonight, so, yeah, that's all right. Do you swear that the testimony that you give pertaining to this case would be truthful under penalty of perjury?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Ms. McKenna, did you wish to speak to this case as well? He was out of the room.
He was out of the room.
It wasn't, sorry, he already was.
He was sworn in.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so if I understand, this is also a case where the primary question is one of grandfathering.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, and we'll, I'll try not to re, repeat everything that's said before. It is, I represent, Mr. Petty and Ms. Swift, this is, and as I understand, the rural residential district and not the Edelweiss district, it is a question over grandfathering primarily given what, how the ZBA has ruled in the previous, previous hearings, so we won't go through that. I do, I do have for you, and I'm going to ask my clients to come up and help you through them, I have five packets here, we can make another copy if you want, they're in folders just for organization, but this is the data back to 2021 of rental history, before they bought the property. The other important fact for this property is that it was built in 2018, so...
Thank you.
Oh, so it's, I thought it was on the same packet.
It should be, it is the same package.
Yeah, he thought Kate...
Oh, no, no, yeah, but keep it, they will, and I'll invite...
Do you have a sixth packet for Kate?
I'll give her mine after the meeting.
Yeah, I'm going to take his.
Oh, okay, so these are all...
Mr. Johnson, can I ask that in the future, that you do make a sixth packet, just to make sure Kate always gets a...
I usually have more, but their copies are better than mine.
That's fine, that's okay.
My apologies.
My apologies.
That's okay. We need one for the record always.
Okay, so continue, Mr. Johnson?
Sure. So I'm gonna ask my client to come up, just so he can walk you through the packet, and they can vote, if they want, just to walk you through some of the data they have on the prior residence. They can talk about when they occupy the property.
State your names for the seller, yeah.
And they can talk about how they operate the property.
Okay.
With that, off you go.
Thank you. First, thank you very much for hearing our case tonight. My name is Matthew Petty, Seventy Skyline Way.
My name is Jennifer Swift, his wife, Seventy Skyline Way.
So we purchased the property in, actually this time last year, in the intent of using as a second home and renting it part-time. We did do our research at the time. We were aware of the twenty twenty-two ordinance and the grandfathering clause within. We worked with our realtor, who represented the seller as well. Learned from her that that property had been used as a rental by her client and by a rental by the owners that sold it to her client. So I made the decision to purchase based on that. What you have in front of you is documentation going as far back as February of twenty twenty-one, showing that the property has been used as a short-term rental. The lead that we received referenced twenty twenty-two, the twenty twenty-two ordinance, and to provide information that it was used as a rental before that, so that's what we've done here.
Just to point a clarification, does that go back through one or two previous owners?
It actually, technically, the documentation here goes back four owners.
Okay.
The first packet that you have, the first stapled packet here, the first page there is an email. I reached out to the, I was able to track down the owner of the, the home that sold to the Sullivan's, which we purchased from. Was able to get his email address and request from him information on whether or not he rented the property, and if he could provide documentation that, that he had rented the property. And he did respond, as you can read there, that they had used the property as a rental. The next page is just the deed showing that he was, in fact, James Mitchell, the owner of the property at that time. Followed by that is the rental listing that he provided to us from his Airbnb listing at that time, which covers, I'll do the first date there, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, out to April of twenty twenty, excuse me, April twenty twenty-one, which you see on the last page, for the most recent, or the last rental that they had, February of twenty twenty-two. They sold the property, April twenty twenty-two. The circled reservation there of Laurie Jones is someone who we rented to this past February. She was able to provide us her confirmation of times where she rented the property in February twenty twenty-one. As the, the date circled there, November twenty-two, twenty twenty-one. And of course, she's on our, our list of rentals as well. I'll get to those in just a moment. The next page here that you'll see has this picture, your stay at James's place, that's in reference to the owner of that, at that time. This is from Laurie Jones. It confirms her rental at the property in November of twenty twenty-one. That picture there, there's another picture on our listing, and when we purchased the house, it matches that picture exactly. You'll see that on, on following pages. The last page from her confirmation says where you stayed, it has a map of our location, that's the exact dates, November twenty, to December fourth, twenty twenty-one. She also provided, you know, we didn't ask for it, she also advised us that she had stayed there in February of twenty twenty-one. That's before James had owned the property. A gentleman named Brian, Bill, I don't have any information on, on those owners, other than their names that do appear on the, on the deed when James purchased the property. And again, it confirms their reservation from February to March in twenty twenty-one. And the last page again there from their confirmation, again, a map where our property is located, the dates, February twenty-seventh to March thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. And that's everything that I have from that series of owners. Now, the Sullivan's is who we purchased from, and you'll see that information on the next packet. And I apologize, some of these pages are double-sided, some are not. I'm not, in terms of, I'm not that proficient in operating the copy machine staples, so pardon me for that. The first page on the next packet is an email sent from Sean Sullivan to their realtor, our realtor as well, providing a list of renters that they had passed along from the previous owners. The previous owners had bookings out until, I believe, August or September. He was willing to provide us that list, as it was of his clients. He didn't provide us any, any confirmation of any guests that they had after that. Probably from a competitive standpoint, the Sullivan's owned other rental properties in the area, didn't wanna give to us, you know, their clients list, obviously. Which I would, I completely understand, I wouldn't either. But that, after a couple pages, you do see a list of rentals from June to the end of, middle of August of twenty twenty-two. That's, that was provided by Sean Sullivan. Now, the page after that actually shows a conversation between myself and Sean Sullivan from August of twenty twenty-two, when my wife and I actually tried to book the property, which we did book the property, as renters.
Wait, wait, wait. Second, now, now I'm lost, where, where is this? Is it this one?
The B R B O?
It'll look like this.
This one? Okay.
This is a snapshot of a conversation between Sean and myself. You see Sean Sullivan's name listed as host, Tranquil Mountain View Home, Downtown North Comma. We use the same phrasing on our listing. In fact, that we use the same pictures from that listing as well. The circled picture there, that's the picture of the home that the Sullivan's used on their listing, you'll see it appear in our listing as well. The conversation there is him advising us that he'd double booked, double booked the property for our stay, letting us know that we couldn't rent the property. He was offering us a, I think, a ten percent discount on another stay. I advised him, sorry, not interested, and we booked another property. But this conversation shows that, you know, he was still renting the property in September, August, September of twenty twenty-two as well. The last couple pages here pertaining to the previous owner is actually an email from our property manager to us, notifying us that, and, and the property manager that we use and the cleaners that we use now, we took from the Sullivan's. They were managing the property and cleaning the property for the Sullivan's during that entire year. So this is his confirmation to me that when he started working for the Sullivan's, he did provide one invoice, which you'll see on the next page, to Sean Sullivan with our address for some cleaning and management of the house. And that's everything I have from the previous owners. Everything else is just information on what we've been doing the property since, which is, as I said, using it for part-time personal use and as a short-term rental. You'll see, again, this is our listing, the first page, the picture matches the, the one that Sean Sullivan was using on his listing. The following pages, well, the first, the first list of rentals, this is what I originally sent to Linda back in September, when this information was first requested. Obviously, we've had rentals since then, so the next two, which are on legal paper, these show all of our rentals since we've owned the property. The next couple pages are just some pictures from the listing when we purchased the house. On the second page, I've circled the picture that matches up with the confirmation that Laurie Jones received in November of twenty twenty-one. The picture's, uh, exact. The next couple pages, just the first page, our purchase and sale, giving it showing that we did purchase from the Sullivan's. In the closing disclosure, it showed that the closing did go through with the Sullivan's as the sellers of the home. If anyone has any questions, we're happy to answer them.
You brought your documentation.
Yes.
I just, I'd like to comment that we've been vacationing in this town for the last ten years with our four children, we were four boys, and we absolutely love the town. We love it, we appreciate everything that the town has done, we can appreciate the rule standing that you do wanna keep. This truly is a second home that I wanna bring my children to, and I'd really appreciate the consideration.
And one, one more thing in regards to our neighborhood, as, as Attorney mentioned, the home wasn't built in two thousand and eighteen. It's a private road, we have an association. It's mostly uninhabited lots, empty lots. There's only actually two residences in the neighborhood, ourselves and Kathy, who was the first one to buy a home there. So our, our nearest neighbor is over a hundred yards away. We don't have any butters, everything next to us is just dirt and trees.
So where are you in conjunction to Robert's Lane? Are you before that?
Robert's Lane. I don't know too many.
You're, you're off of Skyline, uh, it's off of Spigot Drive, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and then there's a little road on the right-hand side that leads down to the water reservoir called Robert's.
Yes, that's Robert's Lane, Kathy lives off Robert's.
Okay, so you're the one before it, Seventy?
Uh, she's first.
Okay.
We're the next one.
Okay.
I guess we're, you're right, technically, we're the only ones on Sky, so, yeah, so Skyline is just us, she's on Roberts. That's the neighborhood, though, it's just the two of us. A gentleman who owned the property on the other road, his, his backyard had butted one of, one of the lots, he did buy that lot, tore the trees down so he could have a view of the valley. That's, that's Nathan. Both Kathy and Nate have my cell phone number. Friendly, have advised them to please call me if there's any incidents whatsoever, which neither one of them have ever done.
I've enjoyed your documentation.
Yes. So you used the house as a vacation place yourselves?
Uh, yep, no, we're staying here for the week right now, Massachusetts Spring Break for the kids is actually this week.
Yeah.
All four kids are there with my mom right now.
Yeah, we understand that. Okay. Other questions from the board?
How did you come to your, the amount that you do rent it out?
Well, that's, it's the tax returns that we filed, I think the number of days from twenty twenty-three was fifty-eight?
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine, but we only purchased the home in April.
Just, I'm just looking back at your documentation, the twenty twenty-one, it was rented a hundred and fifty some odd nights or something to twenty or thirty some odd guests?
Yeah.
And then, moving forward, it looks significantly decreased.
Yeah, that's a factor of the economy more than anything else.
Okay.
In general, people have less free cash today than they did, you know, three years ago. And the previous owners, I don't believe, used it for personal use at all. So we have carved out, the, those times that we wanna stay at the home, we have carved those, those dates out. The Sullivan's did not stay, I don't think that they were local at all, they live in California.
California.
And the people prior to them, I don't believe, based on what Kathy's told us, they were never there. But I don't have any documentation of that, but those, the two things I would attribute to.
Okay, thank you.
Nor am I interested in, we're not really interested in renting out that much anyway. And that's, you know, a hundred, a hundred days a year. Based on the economy, we'll do great if we could, but us people just don't have that kinda money to spend on, on vacations right now.
We're both bankers by trade, can you tell?
Okay, other questions? Okay, thank you for the moment. Does anyone, who, who in the audience would like, well, I guess technically, we need to ask the butters first, but as we just heard, there are a lot of butters. But I, I will ask, is there a butter that would like to speak? No, okay, but several of you did say you wanted to speak, so who wants to be first?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Bill Lemster, one five seven, Don't Drive. Kinda caught me by surprise, I left my, this case folder at home, but I'm gonna have to go by memory. And that sixty-seven, it can be a little foggy, so bear with me. Be honest with you, they want a compliment. I've never seen something like that before, and they did a very nice job. But there was some missing information. It all seemed to go back to, if I remember correctly, twenty twenty-one, what happened in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty. I don't think there was any records there with regards to that rental, who owned it. There were two other owners, from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. This area is, as, if you've lived in town long enough to know, it's, it's been a, there's an H O A up there. And what is in the covenants similar to the case that we had, that you heard prior? That you heard prior, is there any restrictions in there? I don't have those with me right now, but I happened to go and download those from the Carroll County. And there was nothing in there that said anything with regards to rentals. Whether they were accepted or not accepted, it just had, there was nothing in there at all. And I wish I had that for you, but I, but I don't. It came up, like I said, it was registered to Carroll County Registry deeds. Those are the only questions I had, if you're gonna, if you're looking for, I don't like the term grandfathering, try and look for me. Let me use that term. Doesn't appear to be anything from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty, so just keep that in mind, thank you.
Go ahead. Again, state your name and.
John, Councillor, Chatham, Melrose, Mass. I have a home in Edelweiss. Thank you for having me here and letting me speak. It, I don't repeat too much when the previous one had that knowledge. Should I repeat it? Does each case unique?
Um, yeah, go ahead and summarize what you had to say, yes, because each, each case has unique characteristics, and if your argument is relevant to this case, then we do need to hear it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. A couple of points, okay. Thank you for allowing me to speak, I've used a screen for once again, the working stiff, to illustrate similarities between their case and the Madison, this Madison case. I used once again, two thousand and eighteen, which seems to apply to prove non-conformity before that. Madison ordinance established permissive zoning intended to prohibit all use that is not expressly permitted, Article two point three and four point six. The big thing I'm gonna read in four point, four point two, I'm sorry, four point two. Four point two, permissive use, the following use shall apply to rural resident district, and shall be mainly a district of farms, residents, and woodlands. Farms, including all lands, woodlands, single-family houses with accessory buildings and health buildings, and then multi-houses, apartment clusters, and home occupations. I really don't see how short-term rentals fits in there. Everything else for use is under special exception. I'm not seeing short-term rental in there at all. This is permissive, this lists exactly what is permissive. So he says, what, single-family house, now clarifies as an S T R in permissive use? I don't think so. And that's why we go back and look at our ordinance, and we say, what is in permissive use? The only thing that's close for private use is bed and breakfast. Once again, special exception. I have not heard him show his permit for special exception, so I don't see any, see anything there on that part. So the big points I made, though, are you have to look at our ordinance, that when a definition is defined, it must be used. We keep bringing up motel is in our ordinance, not listed in rural resident. Motel, a building, series of buildings in which law has been offered for compensation, with direct independent access to and adjoining parking for each rental unit. That's what these are. Bed and breakfast is a privately-owned, occupied residence with guest rooms by special exception only. So you have to seek special exception if it's close to that. Commercial use does come into play, because, don't take away your image of commercial use. What you should say is, look at the definition, any use involving in part, in whole, the sale of merchandise, materials, or services, but not including home occupation. I heard the testimony that he's having his renters pay for cleaning. That's a service at location. There is service there, they are paying for service, the service of listing, and there's compensation being transaction here. This is a motel, commercial use. And the reason is that it doesn't say commercial use in residential district. Why is that important? Well, if you want commercial use, it is listed in commercial district. So it is specifically used in a district to define commercial use. Remember, just the definition matters, not the term, don't get lost on the term. So, as I said before, when you look at it, special exception is usage. Home has usage, how you use it, just because it's built doesn't make an S T R. Churches, it's not a church, not professional office, all of this is listed. Churches, it's not a church, not professional office. All of this is listed and allowed. We go on in the village district, we allow all residential, and we allow more in the village district with restaurants and other parts. That's how our ordinance is working, how we're doing usage. And they should have applied if you think it is a bed and breakfast or close to it. We want people to come in and use special exception because it allows the butters to come in, state if they have any problems, nuisance with it, allows people to talk about it, and allows you to make a decision what can be used in that area to protect the residents. As I said, he's just arguing that, you know, it's a dwelling unit, it's a house, but it's more than that. Its use fits the mold of a motel, bed and breakfast, and commercial use as defined in your ordinance. Also, it's because not, he didn't say it, but it's in his arguments, is one should not construe the ZBA, the Madison zoning ordinance to lead to absurd results, or second home can't use it for thirty days, things like that. Also, I want to emphasize, the ordinance does not have, is not unconstitutional, vague merely because it could have been drafted with greater precision, or the wording does not precisely confirm one of the standards in which the ZBA is making a decision. The Supreme Court lastly states that you just need to find a reasonably-based evidence. Is it reasonable, I believe it is, to say once again that this is a motel? Or you can say it's close to a bed and breakfast, which is possibly allowed in there? But if it is a bed and breakfast, he had to get special exception. He needs to be denied. He should go back for special exception in order to allow it. And lastly, it is commercial use based on our definition. Okay? So please consider these facts for your review. Also, one thing to, on 1.3, we talk about discontinued use. It's just discontinued use. It doesn't matter if he intend, there's no intent on the 1.3. It's a date. It says discontinued use. I don't see any intent needed to be implied there for discontinued use. Let me see, one last thing. And I want to make sure, I know it's mentioned before, and I want to bring it up here, as he keeps saying, residential use based on Conway case. I want to make sure specifically that you do understand that in that case, it was based on living as a household, which doesn't, is not in an ordinance at all. And also, the language was unique there, and even said, we will make decisions based on the language of the ordinance in effect, even if the results vary from one municipality to the other. They specifically stated that. It was unique to Conway. Ours is unique. It needs to follow exactly what's written, based on the definitions, based on the ordinance, and how it's laid out. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, you want to, just a second. Are you speaking? Give me a second. Let her respond to the...
Thank you again.
State your name again, just for the record.
Sorry, I'm four foot eleven. I'm like... My name is Jennifer Swift. I own the property at Seventy Skyline Way. In just reviewing of the cease and desist letter that was sent out, it says Sections 4.2 and 4.4 of the Town of Madison zoning board and end states that the only uses of property permitted by right in the rural residential and vision, excuse me, village districts are single-family houses and certain other uses that do not apply. Further down in the next paragraph, it says, it appears that your short-term rental use was established after the ordinance was amended on March 8th, 2022, and is therefore in violation. The next paragraph says, if you claim the property was being used as short-term rental prior to March 8th, March 8th, 2022, you will need to provide proof. Now, I've had several comments thanking us for the proof that we've submitted as far back as 2021 with previous owners. With all due respect to everyone else's strong opinions on short-term rentals, good or bad, I can certainly respect everyone's opinion. I respectfully ask that the zoning board review the letter that was sent, asking for proof prior to March 8th of 2022, because we did in fact do that. Thank you.
Michael Brown, twenty-two, a little short. This house was built in 2018. The ordinance goes back to 1987, so therefore, you can't grandfather something if it's already illegal. Am I correct? Grandfathering is allowing something to continue that was done before an ordinance. This ordinance was put into place before this house was built. That doesn't make it legal. That's, that's my, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. McKenna?
Paul McKenna. These people bought the house after the ordinances were in place. They should have done their due diligence. And basically, in my opinion, the law says you can't be an STR. It's quite evident that we've got to follow the law here. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Did you folks have any?
Yeah, let's say a couple of things.
Do you have any information about rentals from 2022? I got 21, 23, and 24. I didn't see 22. Am I missing it?
Should be in there, yes.
Yeah, there were some in there.
Oh, no, you are correct.
Including the, sorry, Matthew Petty, Seventy Skyline Way, including the rental that we booked in August of that year, four September, that he had to cancel on us. In regards to the special exception request, it is not something that would ever occur to us. And really honing on that word usage, how the property is used, the people that stay on our home use it exactly the way that we do. They cook there, they sleep there, they watch TV there. It wouldn't occur to us to apply for an exception for that any more than we would apply for an exception for the way that we use the property. It's exactly what we do. We stayed there for a short period of time and live in the home. As far as, you know, doing our due diligence, we researched the 2022 ordinance that was specified in the letter, whether it's reasonable for us to have knowledge of a 1987 ordinance and how that would even be stumbled upon by someone who lives hundreds of miles away in Cape Cod. I don't know if that's something that would even be possible for us to find. Probably have to be here, looking through archives to find something like that.
It's on the town website.
We found the 2020 ordinance that specified that date in March, I believe it was, in reference grandfather's use. So we were able to provide what we can. Obviously, the home was built in 2018. If we're looking at 1987, obviously, we can't, we can't provide anything.
Clarification on the 1987, it's not, that's just when our zoning ordinance in the town of Madison was adopted. And there's wording in even the most current zoning ordinance that references if something was constructed before or used before 1987. So we're not looking at the eighty-seven ordinance. It's just a reference to in one of the, what do you call it? Yeah, one of the sections of it.
Just a couple of follow-up points. Again, I don't think my client needs to show 2018 or 2019, but all they need to show is that there was short-term rental usage of the property by the prior owner before the zoning ordinance changed in March of 2022. I know I keep harping on this, but it's the March 22 ordinance that made the difference, that made the change. Prior to that, there wasn't any differentiation between long-term rentals and short-term rentals. Only in 2022 did the definition of dwelling unit include now a restriction that said non-transient use, which would have to be more than thirty days. So that's the first time there was any separation between long-term rental and short-term rental. And there's nothing else in the zoning ordinances that predate that, that have any restrictions on renting a single-family home. And so that's where the issue is, and that's why the non-conforming use test is, was it being used for short-term rental, which they proved through the documentation, the ZBA said they wanted as of March 22, and they have continued to use it. And so we would submit that this is the classic case for allowing them to continue to use it as a pre-existing non-conforming use that exists prior to March 22, and they continued it after March 22.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, then let's collect findings of fact for this case. Any other comments in public? Okay, so the most critical findings of fact are data, the date of the purchase, remind me?
April 2023. Right. The closing documents are dated for April. April 2023.
April 2023, right, okay. And first rental by the current owners?
I'm just looking at... June 9th, 2023.
Okay.
At least that's the earliest documented that they provided.
Yeah, that's fine, right. So, and the earliest date...
Of rental in general?
Of, yeah, documented rental.
Is 2021. Four, twenty-one, twenty-one.
February 2021.
February 2021.
Four, four owners ago.
I'm sorry, four what?
Four owners. Very, very end of the first package, references their estate with Bill and Bob. Bill and Bob, February, February 2021.
One of the previous renters supplied us information from a rental prior to another one.
Okay, so...
I'm sorry.
There's also no, no evidence of a one-year lapse prior to March of 2022. The major change in our ordinance was March 2022. Okay, so the question really... So if I might summarize, it appears that from the perspective of the three-period perspective, nineteen eighty-seven and prior, and between nineteen eighty-seven and 2022, and after 2022. For those who accept the three-period model, there's adequate evidence to show that it meets the criteria of having been a pre-existing non-conforming use in that middle period, without abandonment or lapse. So the question we have to ask is whether the arguments that state that, we won't get into that right now, but I mean, effectively, we have to determine whether or not the middle period exists. All right, so other questions, other comments, are there other items of fact that we actually, that we need here before we have deliberation?
Do you want the numbers specific to rental by year in the finding of fact? Or is that more going to be for deliberation?
I think it is.
Well, it's interesting. I mean, that's, I mean, we could go, if you have them handy, let's just go ahead and list them because, you know...
Twenty twenty-one was thirty-two times for a hundred and fifty-seven days total. And this is just based off of what was provided to us. I did not do 2022 because it was so short. I'm not convinced it was a complete listing. Twenty twenty-three was twenty-seven times for a hundred and three days. And I didn't do 2024 because there was only, I think, eleven days total. I didn't, it was two times, I think.
Okay. Okay, I mean, that helps us establish a quantity of what the, but I can also make comments that... Mr. Petty mentioned that he probably was gonna rent on the order of a hundred days, so that's consistent. There's no...
If, if we were to allow it, it wouldn't be absurd to say, okay, a hundred days.
Yeah, well, the point is that, yeah, that's, yeah, right. So it gives us, the quantity here is not that inconsistent with one another. Okay, so any other findings of fact that we want to deliberate here?
This, I don't know if we need to mention this because we didn't really talk about, we talked about not having the HOA documents, but the fact that this, I don't even know what the name of the HOA development is. Does anyone?
We have a meeting in June, and to Mr. Lemster's point, no, there is no language in the HOA regarding rentals?
I understand that. I'm just saying, we don't have a copy of that. So I think it would be important to at least mention that this, this house is within an HOA. But I don't really know what the HOA is called.
Yeah, I think it's...
It's very generic.
I couldn't find it.
It's just exchanged.
Yeah, no, forgive me.
Yeah, it's a very young association. It was, everything was owned by the builder up until pretty recently.
I can, I can look up an association check that we've sent out, and I can tell you the name from the cancel check in just a moment.
Do you get self-service on that address?
Yeah, I was gonna say, in this building, I'm not so sure you're gonna actually get it.
Is there a gas wifi?
Big money, no way we...
There is.
There is. I'm getting...
Look at that, down here.
Skyline Estates Owners Association.
Skyline Estates.
Owners Association.
So which raises the question is, what, is there a deed restriction in that association document?
And when was the association created?
Raises an interesting question. That is, if the association, I mean, frankly, from my limited experience, most of these associations, I mean, they're established at a specific point in time. But when the builder sets up that, there's not really a significant change usually in the restrictions. I mean...
Post, post-builder, when the builder turns it over to the homeowners?
Yeah, I mean, they set most of the deed restrictions at the time of the building, so that there's not a hullabaloo at the time of the change, right? I mean, it can be, but generally speaking...
There are not a lot.
But, but, but we still need, but we still need to know what the deed, if there was a deed restriction regarding...
And what the...
I think the only thing everybody's agreed on tonight is that there are no language in there that says there's a deed restriction restricting rental, use of the property for rentals.
I get that you state that, but...
The selectman, he testified to that, too.
But I'd still be interested to see what the specific language is, because these are interpretations, right?
So, okay, but we do have testimony to the fact.
Yes, that was input, that there do not appear to be deed restrictions.
Any deed restriction regarding... Any deed restriction regarding rentals? Okay, so we can decide to deal with that as we wish. Okay, so we have a few, just to review what we have here. Oh, yeah.
Sharon, I want to make one comment if I may.
Yeah.
That might be a finding of fact is that testimony was given that there were no rental records from 2018 to 2020, and the house was built in 2018.
I can, I can list that.
Thank you.
Although I'm not sure.
I'm not sure how.
I mean, I, I mean, the question is, between 1987 and 2022, if short-term rentals were not restricted, then the fact that there's nothing between then and '21 becomes irrelevant, because we have a continuous record to show that it was being used before '21, '21.
Starting in '21.
However, I will make note, there's no rental records between construction in 2018 and 2021. Okay. Okay, so what I have is the date of purchase was April 2023, the first rental by the current owner was June 9th, 2023, the earliest documented rental we have is February of 2021, which predates the ordinance change. There's no evidence of any lapse prior to March 2022. The major change in our ordinance was in March 2022. The approximate rental days for 2021 were 157 days. 32 usages, 27 for 2023 for 103 days, and a dozen days or plus or minus in 2024. Mr. Petty said he would probably intend to rent it on the order of 100 days a year. The house is in an HOA called Skyline Estates Owners Association. There is testimony that there does not appear to be any deed restriction regarding rentals, and there were no rental records between 2018 and 2021, 2018 being the construction date. Those are our findings of fact at this point. Anything else? Mr. Johnson, are you satisfied with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, in which case?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Okay. All in favor? All right, okay, so the public hearing is closed. So in this, in this, just to summarize, in this particular case, we have two things to decide, whether we can accept the evidence of a grandfathering from 2021. And the second question is whether the contention that the short-term rental was in fact already illegal at some much earlier, prior date, it's actually relatively irrelevant, whether it was 1987 or 1990. Certainly, like 2018, there was language which is, can mention, which is early enough for our discussion. So, how will we proceed? We can, of course, continue to, for the purpose of discussing that particular issue. Does anyone, let me ask the board, does anyone seriously think there's any problem with the evidence on grandfathering to 20, prior to 2022?
Were the evidence, no?
Okay. No.
Are you asking if we want to see further back?
No, I'm just asking whether, whether just, it's kind of a straw poll, whether we feel that the grandfathering, assuming the grandfathering begins, that the date, the relevant date is 2022, then we've got good evidence, right? So the question is, how do we address the question as to whether or not 2022 is the date, as Mr. Johnson maintains, or whether the language of our ordinance is such that we need to.
Yeah, I think this may be a case where we need to talk to Chris Bolt to see what his opinion is, based upon the fact that, that the house was built in 2018, didn't start to rent until 2021. Which side of the rule this particular house falls, because it was built after the original, the original ruling and this kind of thing. In my own opinion, I think that while we use, we have to use common sense in a lot of this stuff.
Okay, so what you're, what you're actually arguing in this case is that in legal sense, we were already posting potential wording in 2021 that creates a date that's earlier than 2022. Is that what you're arguing?
Yes. And I have to say that while these people have done a good job, I agree that this may be a case where we could allow this to go forward, even though there may be language as spurious or as anonymous as it may be.
I'm sorry, allow it to go forward.
For this, for this, allow us to approve this case, even though there may be language that is not quite clear, talking about prior to 1987, 19, I'm sorry, 2022 and 2018 was the other, the other date, yeah.
Okay, so you're not arguing that.
No, I'm not.
You're not arguing that the posting of warrants, you know, that were voted on in 2021
Right.
Voted down constitute a notification of the town's intent that would invalidate the, you're not arguing that?
No, not, not in this case.
Not in this case. Jake, what do?
My personal opinion on it is it has to be that March date because the town can't decide that wording chain, by, and by town, I mean the selectmen, it has to be voted on at town meeting and ratified. And even if the, even if your intent is there, then.
Right, although a, an ordinance that you're right, technically the issue is Bob shouldn't give a building permit after a warrant is posted, then later is approved.
I'm not quite sure I understood that analogy either.
I think, I think I get what he's saying is, if, if somebody, if he approves a 25-foot setback, and then we change it to you need 40 feet, what do you do with that?
Oh, no, that, that's pre-existing, but what I mean is if the town has already posted the warrant that we're changing it to 40 feet.
Yeah, but it hasn't.
And it's, and it hasn't been voted on, that creates a timeframe where he cannot approve that.
The lower setback.
Right.
But.
But, but that's, that's not what Doug is arguing here, that we don't have a situation like that. I was asking if he was trying to argue that.
Okay.
No, he's not.
To counter though, what Jake is, what Jake and you are both saying is that one of the things that this case sort of hinges on with that March 2022 town vote was the fact that we're presuming that short-term rentals were legal prior to that. And I go back to something Mr. Cancelerich said, which is, we have permissive ordinances. Nowhere in our ordinance does it permit short-term rentals. It just is not indicated. And anything that looked like, from 1987 to 2022, anything that looked like a short-term rental, which he likens to being a motel, was defined and explicitly not allowed. So the question, we, while this case, they bought the house post-March 2023, this case really starts, starts to reside within that second timeframe. It's not pre-87, it's that 87 to 22 timeframe, where part of the question is whether or not legitimately, short-term rentals were not authorized by the town. The language "short-term rental" didn't, didn't necessarily come into parlance until, you know, the mid to late 2000s. So you wouldn't necessarily have needed.
No, that, that's true, but then someone on the other side could easily argue that. You can argue to an absurd.
Again, to an absurd result.
And an absurd result might be concluded when rental is permitted, which it clearly was, that how can you arbitrarily set it at 30 days?
And my disappointed devil's advocate, they wouldn't feel the need to change that wording on that dwelling, dwelling unit to include transient if it was already understood that it was not allowed.
I argue that it was understood that it wasn't allowed, because our ordinances are permissive, not restrictive, they're permissive. And we took great pains to go to paper and say motels are not allowed. All these other pieces are allowed by special exception. Being, you know, a daycare center, a bed and breakfast, you know, any lodging that was, was mentioned in there was either by special exception or strictly not allowed. In, in the town's mind, that would have covered those, you know, those activities and usages that are now being questioned.
Does the failure on the behalf of the town act, to act on any thing that was short-term rented?
No.
Does that play into that, no?
No. The fact that you choose or don't enforce an ordinance does not negate your ability to do so going forward.
Yeah, so.
So I don't, what, I guess my point is, I don't know if we're in that 87 to 2022 range, kind of by default.
Right, well, we're, we're also in a situation where, I mean, because we've got all kinds of cases stacked up that are depending on this decision, right? In fact, we have a case that's going to be appealed. It's based on the decision, and this question is that we need to be very clear on our position on this and make a decision regarding, because we have to be consistent with this in all cases, because the reality is that if we're going to change the date from 2022 to 1987, then it has to be consistently applied to every, every case that falls into that timeframe. So I guess my recommendation would be at this point that we, we, we huddle again. We get, you know, review our legal thing and then come back and have, you know, another, continue this till, you know, next month and discuss.
Till May 15th at 6:00 PM in the oral level, the town hall, you mean?
That's what I'm thinking, right.
I mean.
I would agree with that, because I think this, a decision tonight
is we can't do it unless we hear counsel on that, because this, this could really affect other.
Well, it will affect every other situation, because we need, if we're gonna, if we're gonna continue down the path of saying.
Yeah.
That the.
As much as it's, you want to do it.
1987 already made it.
Yeah.
I'm not opposed to doing that, I just want to make sure we.
We're correct in.
We're correct in doing that. Well, I am allowed to make a motion, I move that we continue this case to May 15th, 6:00 PM at Town Hall.
I second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, so we will continue this case after we've had a chance to review our legal situation. We have these findings of fact, and we basically discussed the fact that, you know, we need to clarify statutory basis of our decision.
I have a point of clarification on that one, just.
Yes.
Doesn't, unlike the original prior decision tonight, where there was a question and asking of the applicant, can they get some more information, doesn't sound like the board is looking for any additional information from this applicant, so with, is the meeting next, I'll say more plain English, is the meeting, at May 15th, is that a public meeting, but not a public hearing?
We will. No, we're continuing the case, which means that when we reopen the case, we will reopen it with a hearing. We, I mean, we don't. Yeah.
Is there anything that the ZBAA is looking for from my applicant in this case, since there's going to be another hearing?
Not with respect to, you're free to bring other information. But we are not looking for other documentation on the grandfathering, because I think it's pretty clear that if we conclude that 2022 is the most relevant date, you have provided adequate documentation to satisfy our request for that.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 that's fine, this is, we've, we've continued the case, and so that's, okay, so that's where we are with these two cases. We need to formally continue the other cases, and with your permission, we will group all of those cases together, as you requested before, and I just want to clarify the date you prefer.
Can we, can I ask, in light of the fact that neither of these two cases were decided, can we just continue the rest of those to next month, because we're going to be here anyway, and then we'll see where we are, and then we can make that, make a conclusion on that?
Yes, that's fine, that's why I'm asking what date you want.
Yeah, so I would just, at this point, I would continue them to the next.
Just continue them to the next, till May.
Just for simplicity, I, I'm not suggesting I'm not going to end up.
I understand. No, I understand completely, we're, we're completely amenable to that suggestion. Okay, so then let me, let me list those cases, and we will, okay, so that's case 2314, which is for Mr. Finn and Ms. Harrigan. Case 2316, which is for McMillan and Thompson. Case 2317, which is for Mr. O'Brien, or, yeah, and Brian and Walsh, O'Brien. And case 2319 for Mr. Burns. Case 2320 for the Franklins. Case 2322 for DeShin and Couch. For case 2323 is already continued. Case 2324, which is for the Kieselbachs. Case 2325 for Rishi Saksena and.
Sahai.
Sahai, okay. So those are the cases, I move, we continue these cases till May 15th, 6:00 PM.
One second.
Second, and all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that concludes the caseload for this evening. We have administrative business to take care of, as a board, you're all welcome to stay, but you're all welcome to leave.
Clarification, grouping those all together, because we're.
No.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
It hasn't been combined together.
No, those cases have not been combined.
No, no, they've only been continued as a group, because they have the same agents.
Thank you.
Okay, so for you guys, we have the election of our officers, and we have the approval of our draft minutes.
What, nobody wants to hang around with the administrative?
The technical answer is, as chairman, it's my discretion, the sequence, we take cases.
Well, yeah, you got it.
And the two cases that we have, the cases that had to do with grandfathering, and that's why we address those cases, because they both had to do with grandfathering. And that's why we address those cases, because they both had to do with grandfathering.
Did you have a bug?
Ladybug.
Oh, she was over here before.
Oh, they're not the real, they're, aren't they the impostor bugs? These are not tigs. I've already had one.
Have you?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna suggest, see, Bill, you're back, okay. So, no, I believe, I forgot to ask the question, but for the election of officers, all board members and alternates can vote. Is that not correct, Kate?
So?
I think so, yeah. So I'm willing to stand for chairman.
You de-elevated Jennifer, so.
So you have to re-elevate?
That means, I mean that.
Oh, I see what you mean, in order.
You've de-elevated.
As, we're electing officers, right? So we have alternates and we have regulars, right? Now, if an alternate is going to stand for office, then they will have to be elevated to a permanent position as a regular. But at the moment, unless I, I don't think, Bill, or, are either of you interested in running for chairman or vice chairman? Okay, so in that case, so we don't need to address that question, all right? So Sharon is willing to stand for vice president, vice chairman. And I'm willing to stand for chairman.
All in favor?
But I'm also willing to allow anyone else who wants to stand for either of those offices to do so. Does anybody?
I don't know, is it gonna be a coup, George? Oh, no.
Fight you.
No, 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 no.
Drew, I think you have it.
Yeah, well, okay, that's fine, but we, we will formally vote for, this is for Sharon for vice chairman. So I move that we.
Do you have to nominate me?
Yes, I'm, so I mean, I move to nominate Sharon for vice president, for vice chairman.
Sorry.
Second, okay. Are there any other candidates?
Mark wanted me to pass along his regrets.
His regrets.
Yeah, he called me too.
I think Mark technically is not allowed to be an officer of this board. Because he's, he's the chairman.
Can he even sit as a full term?
He, he can sit on any case, but I don't think, he just can't be an officer of the board.
Oh.
Yeah. Okay.
We have a vote on that.
We need to vote for Sharon, all in favor of having Sharon be vice chairman?
Aye.
I vote for myself.
You can, yes, okay. You may vote if you wish.
Well, I really need to, like, when you do a roll call, though, like this, we're gonna talk about this in the minutes, and then we get to that, so we'll talk about that next.
Oh, do you want us to say, like, Jake, aye?
Yeah, I really think we should.
Do you want a roll call vote?
Roll call votes, because when I did my minutes, I did a roll, I said roll call vote, but I really need to put aye, so I'm going to, when we do look at the minutes, I'm going to change them and put Jake Martin, aye, Drew Gentile, aye.
Or you just put aye and put the names and.
It has to be in there. I, I thought about it afterwards, and I said, I really think we should, after doing the rate to know law thing today, yeah.
Okay, so, any opposed to Sharon being vice chairman? Okay, so that was unanimous.
Six ayes.
Six zero.
All right.
Shoot.
I nominate Drew for chairman.
A second?
Are there any other candidates? All in favor of me being chairman?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Six ayes.
Okay. Okay, so now we need to look at.
Seven ayes, I'm sorry.
The draft minutes. There's.
Seven of us.
Seven of us.
Did you elevate her?
No, for the, for the chairman, for the vote, for our officers.
I'm sorry.
All, everyone can vote.
Okay, sorry.
And so it was seven of them.
Yep, yep, got it.
It's seven.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, now for the minutes, only those people who were at the last meeting can vote. By the way, just technicality, so did we, did the selectmen change the order of? So who, the question was, who's gonna be alternates, because Jake wished to return to an alternate position?
He's an alternate, and Jennifer's an alternate.
Jennifer's an alternate.
And now Bill, what do you, I don't know what you're doing with Bill, you're keeping him as an alternate?
Well, okay, what did, what did the selectmen do?
They made me an alternate.
Yeah, but that means they had to raise.
They put it as an appointed member.
Who?
Bill.
So Bill is raised to a regular member at this point? Okay, so Bill, Bill is regular, Jake is an alternate, okay. That doesn't affect the recusal from these items.
And just because I'm an alternate, I'll still be here for it?
Yeah.
To the best of my ability, I showcased tonight. I'm sorry, again, it's pretty.
Right, okay.
I'll come find you.
And, and as I said, I said this to Jennifer earlier. Just mention it again, in the event that we have to elevate her in the first couple of meetings before she's actually got her feet down, because somebody wants to find member board and she's technically an alternate, will, when we come to a vote on something that's significant other than these casual, well, these are casual, I mean, they're not, they're not controversial potentially, because it can't be appealed, then I'll ask Jennifer to vote in the fourth position. And we'll go person by person, and the reason why I want to do that is so that she's not put in a position to cast the deciding vote, okay? So if she were, you get what I'm saying, so in the fourth position, if three people have already voted one direction, it's already decided. And if it's a split vote at that point, then she can choose to vote according to her conscience, either to cast a deciding vote or to keep the vote split and leave it to me to cast the deciding vote, okay? So that way, I just want to say for you all that we want to make sure that Jennifer has a chance to integrate into the team, but if she has to play a role, we want to support her so that she can play her role, but at the same time, not, you know, not have to abstain.
Her class, too, is coming up, too.
Right, she's going to a class.
You joined at a tumultuous time.
The Zoom thing that I thought was, you're going down there?
I can't stand the idea of sitting on a Zoom for eight hours. Or sitting on, lurking in the background. I'd rather just get out of town for a day.
I don't know, I have to look at the.
So it was either or.
It was either or.
Okay.
I was thinking about going.
So I'm going, I'm going.
You're going? All right, so maybe.
You wanna ride my pickup truck? You're welcome to.
What date was that?
Are you going?
Seven.
May what?
Seven.
Seven.
I thought it was May eleventh. It's on a Saturday.
No.
Eleven, yeah. May eleven?
It was definitely on a Saturday.
Yeah.
It's May eleventh.
It's May eleven.
Whatever Saturday is.
Eleven.
Yep, I did it by July.
Because I knew that I could go if it was.
I thought one on May the seventh.
That's what you're going to, right, that's what I thought.
That's what I'm going to. I'm going to one on the seventh of May. It's the local officials workshop.
We're going to.
Let me clarify, because I have.
On twenty-five Triangle Drive.
In my computer, I have all those dates, and let me clarify.
I bet she signed up for this one.
I will send a mail out to all of you.
I can't go.
Drew, I will, I should be out of town next month.
Funeral.
But I will zoom in, zoom in, call in.
Zoom one.
If I can, I'll be in D C.
Which is gonna go, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or or we can just elevate Jennifer and.
Yeah.
Let her.
Whatever, whatever you and Attorney Johnson.
Yeah, well, we, we have time to discuss that, okay? But you could potentially zoom in.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not, not going out of, out of country, just.
No, I'm, I'm only concerned because I know I've tried to zoom in a couple of times and that's.
Not been good.
It's. Now, the phone call was definitely better, I feel, than the Zoom.
But we talked about that today in the seminar we, we did for all day, which you heard us doing.
Oh, I laughed, it got boring, I'm sorry.
What, what was the conclusion?
Well, doing a Zoom meeting, you know, you've got to make sure it is definitely clear. And you're right, when we did it with you, it was not very clear.
I think the telephone call when we did that.
Well, the telephone connection, that is, you've got the Zoom screen, but you use the telephone for the audio.
For the audio. Or even just when we, when we hooked it into the landline and put it on speakerphone, we did that once, too.
Oh, yeah, but.
That was crystal clear.
Is it tele, but, but your point is that it's a telephone connection as opposed to the, the computer connection, yeah.
And the select board did that with their first, their select board meeting with Joy, they did it, she was six, so they did it via telephone.
Right.
And you could, you could hear her crystal clear.
Okay, that's good, well, all right, well, we may do that then, if we can, yeah. Okay, so then we need to go through the minutes. I had a few changes. We'll just go page by page, so anybody has anything, just speak up, so anything on the first page?
Yeah. Why did, in March, why did you have to elevate Sharon to a full voting number?
I used to be an alternate.
And now you're full, as of?
Yeah, as of the town meeting and, and when I went and swore in, I'm a full member.
Yeah, so the five, the five of us now are one, two, three, four, five.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, there's a, there's a phrase missing, let's see, excuse me. The last page, one of seventeen, at the very bottom of the page.
Last page, sixteen?
First page.
First page, page one, excuse me.
Case twenty-three twelve, continued October, that, that paragraph.
That paragraph allows for short-term rentals relating to denial of. Dated August tenth as to.
First page.
I'm trying to find, I wrote down, there was.
At the bottom.
The paragraph that starts with case twenty-three dash twelve, the third sentence down.
Whether or not their circumstances allow for short-term rental.
To determine whether or not their circumstances allows for short-term rentals. Relating to a denial from Moebi Ray. No, that's, it's the way we said it on all of them.
Uh, it's missing article number. Article blank section.
Article four, section four point six.
Yeah, I should say article number, section, blank, point blank.
For, for case twenty-three twelve?
Yeah.
It's not four point six.
I know, I'm just saying.
It's not, it's not.
It's article four point two.
No, but you see on these how it says article blank, section blank? And then this one just says article blank, that's what it says.
Article IV, section four point two.
They continue to know already, I mean, it's really continued, I mean, not, not, I mean, not, not a rehearing, so.
Okay.
I don't pad it down here with the butt.
I saw something missing, but I missed, I missed, regret, I missed rogue. Do we get?
I can read the files.
You say this.
Article four. Section four point two.
Article four, section four two, it's just missing the article four.
It's missing, yeah, the article IV. Comma.
Okay. Anybody have anything on page two?
I just had one word.
Yeah.
Three quarters of the way down.
Which page are we at?
Sorry, page two?
Yeah.
Under the legal analysis area?
Oh, I didn't take that, that's, that is cut and pasted from his, I'm not changing anything he did.
Yeah, because it says the word with, and it should say which.
Yep, I could just, but I don't feel.
Okay, then, then the appropriate thing to do is after with, put in parentheses, S I C.
So where were we on there, so where were we?
The first word in the second paragraph that starts with first, comma, the amended dwelling unit definition, upon with.
Yeah.
Put in parentheses, S I C, after that word.
Yeah, I don't feel comfortable, she, I saw.
No, that's fine. Perfectly fine.
Yeah.
You retyped his whole legal message?
No, I cut paste, I, I made it a Word document, I took it from his hand as a Word document, cut, pasted it into my minutes. That's what I'm gonna do for every case, is I'm gonna put his factual background and his legal analysis, so it's in every single case, because I think it should be going forward. Because he don't want it to keep, because he didn't want to keep repeating it every time he told his case, that's why I did it that way.
Yeah, 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 no, that's okay, but it's, it's okay for us to, if there's a mistake to.
Oh, yeah, you can, you can, I'm not going to.
No, 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 my point, yeah, okay.
Nope.
So page four, anybody have anything on page four? Actually, at the very first, there's an awkward sentence, the last sentence of the first paragraph, Attorney Johnson stated, there is nothing on the website. If someone were to go to the website to do any.
Should be a period.
There's nothing on the website, period.
If someone were to go to the website to do any due diligence.
To do due diligence, we don't, we can take any out.
Someone were to go to the website to do any due diligence. Whether or not, yeah, it's a weird sentence.
Okay, page, page five.
I'll make it one, I'll make it a period and a.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I just, I was here until two o'clock in the morning.
Oh, I know, that's.
We am.
You're human.
You better put it.
You're human, people.
I'm getting punchy by them.
Yeah.
And then she was back at seven o'clock next morning.
Anything else on page four? Page five, I've got one thing on page five. In the statement, after the break, the middle of the page, right where it says draft, under the, where the D is, that paragraph, Gentile stated, he is suggesting to the board.
Is that he is going to provide?
What he is suggesting to the board is that he's going to provide the board with a statement of argument and I just struck that whole phrase out, procedure.
Argument?
And procedure, period.
Take out what he is doing now is giving the board.
And then Gentile wants to read the procedure of.
Yeah, Gentile wants to read procedure.
Okay.
Period, strike and.
Yeah.
Gentile wants to read the procedure.
Yeah, there, there, okay, we're there, okay. And then there's a couple of things in the last sentence as well, findings, so middle of the last sentence in that paragraph, findings of fact, the board will refine the
Argument.
Statement of the board's argument. And decide to grant or deny the petition.
The board's argument, and, not whether.
Yes, right, yeah, so I'll just say findings of fact, the board will refine the statement.
Find, thought, instead of making.
Statement of the board's argument, and.
Decide to grant or deny the petition. And then in the next Gentile stated, the first item in the board's argument is the following.
Which is the initial line of argument, which was later, that's your quoted words.
Oh, yeah, that's fine, that's okay.
You want to put that in parentheses, though, because it might make it clearer, so what the hell was I?
I just cut pasted what he, he gave me, so.
If you put that in parentheses.
Yeah, that's actually, yeah.
Put what, what in parentheses?
So, put, take out, you can probably take out the comma after following.
Yep.
And insert a parenthesis.
Which.
The initial line of the argument, which was later revised, close paren.
Yeah. Okay, and on page six, there's a, there's a duplicate sentence in the middle paragraph. Gentile stated that one of the reasons, Gentile stated that one of the reasons you have the same sentence twice, so you can take it. Middle of the, middle of the middle paragraph.
I see, it's right above me.
Oh, yes, I did, oh, yeah, I did.
Yeah, right in the middle of the page, Gentile stated, Gentile stated, yeah.
She wanted to make sure.
Making a point.
Yeah.
She's just saying top law.
No, because you get, you get.
She stated it twice.
You get, you start seeing double.
Yeah, I know, I get you. I pulled some all nighters here.
I don't like it.
Although they're, strike the first one.
What's that?
You have to strike that first sentence, not the second sentence.
I didn't, I just hit the first one.
Okay.
Yep, and then Gentile stated that one of the reasons right now is considered a dwelling unit is vague is because it does not specify rentals.
Right.
Yep, so let's add it.
Yeah, so, I mean, there are two sentences are identical, so.
No, they're not, the first sentence is missing the dwelling unit part.
Oh, 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 oh.
I'm just gonna take out the first sentence.
Yeah, just take out the first sentence, you're right, good point, good, I didn't, I'm a terrible proofreader.
Don't worry about it.
Okay, anybody have anything else on page six?
I read through these three times.
Yeah, I'll.
Get punchy after.
Yeah, you do, yeah, it's impossible to proofread your own stuff.
Please, I got to a point where I looked at the word of and couldn't understand.
Bottom of page seven. Those things bear. Yeah, okay, you've got or not twice in that sentence, so you just take out or not, whether or not at the end of the sentence, you've got legal period instead of legal.
Oh, take out or not.
Yeah, just take out or not at the, at the very end of that, yeah.
Gotcha.
Okay, yeah, so anybody got anything on page eight?
Oh, up seven is a bottom paragraph, starts off with row agreed and stated, is this the one point the board needs to stay with? Should we take that out, or?
Is, is the.
This is.
Is the.
So you have to put an I S in there.
Yep, is the one point.
That's correct.
This is how you talk. This is the one point.
Some days I wouldn't, I talk that way, but I'm.
This is the one.[1782.94]
Point the board needs to stay with, yeah.
Period.
Here's the word is.
Okay, page eight, anything? Page nine?
And of course, I pasted the factual background, quoted it.
Right, page ten, right, so, so I guess the same thing would be true of.
The, down here, the with, put S I C after it.
Yeah.
Where it says second, the amended dwelling unit definition, upon with, under the legal analysis.
Yep, you want me to put S I C?
S I C.
And you want me to write which?
No, just put, I, just put S I C, just, just as it was.
I don't like changing anything.
Yeah, right. Okay, I don't have anything else until page thirteen. Okay, on page thirteen, just under the middle of the, of the page where it says, there's a paragraph, a very small paragraph that starts with Canselerick, and then Gentile stated, okay, and that paragraph, Gentile stated, okay, and the second sentence, Gentile stated that, scratched the what?
Oh.
Canselerick has argued, then you can scratch, is that, has argued, just as the town has argued, that by changing, okay, so.
Yep.
And then, also, after March twenty-two, you can strike to prohibit that.
Okay. That makes sense. Then like I said, on the motions, I'm gonna, I am gonna add the roll call votes, just so everybody can see, page with you at that.
Anybody have anything else, let's see, that was page fifteen, fourteen, no, fifteen, I have a correction at the bottom. In the paragraph that says Jane Buckley.
Yep.
Okay, so, middle of the paragraph, Gentile stated that.
In Idyll Weiss?
Yeah, so strike in Idyll Weiss and after March twenty-twenty-two, Gentile stated, he is not sure how Boyd selected.
Gentile stated what?
Stated that he is not sure, so strike in Idyll Weiss and after March twenty-twenty-two.
He is not sure, Idyll Weiss and after March twenty-two.
So Gentile stated that he is not sure how Boyd selected those, or how.
Take out the Idyll Weiss?
In Idyll Weiss and after March twenty-twenty-two, that all comes out. And then the whole rest of it stays.
Yes. Five words in the, in the year, okay, so that's, that, that's all I had, anybody?
I just have a suggestion, when you cut and paste what Bob said earlier. You know that paragraph that you cut and pasted that you didn't wanna change?
That's the legal, that's the legal analysis.
Okay, no, what I'm saying is, if you look at page sixteen, where you've got a horizontal line that breaks the paragraph, if you.
That's case by case.
What I'm saying is, because you wanna highlight something you cut and pasted, didn't type yourself.
Yeah.
You may wanna put these horizontal lines on each side of it, which will highlight that this is something that you.
Well, I quoted it, if you see, I quoted his, I've actually quoted his factual background, I put quote marks, factual, and quoted at the end of his legal analysis, I quoted that material. See, our factual background is underlined.
Which page?
On page two, that's the first legal analysis and factual background, I put a quotation mark.
At the beginning.
Factual, and to go to page three, at the very end of his legal analysis, where it says housing, I put an ending quotation.
Can we italicize it? It would be more distinguishable.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm ready to add.
Well, you're.
It's such a long quote, he's saying it's not clear, because you lose track of the fact that there's a quote at the beginning. It's just a question whether, from a form perspective.
You could still leave everything the way it is, with the quotes and the bolding and all that kinda stuff, but italicize all of that from a font perspective, because it would indicate then, that, that that's not necessarily.
Sure. Could you just put as prepared by Attorney Johnson?
But you gotta put something at both ends of it, too.
Well, I said here, see Attorney Johnson's factual background and legal analysis is quoted below, I, I put that paragraph in that.
No, I understand that, but if you're reading paragraph, 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 you're, you're gonna sort of lose track of where that first quote.
Where that ends.
That end quotation mark is, what I'm saying is, try to make this whole piece of, of, of text stand out from the rest of the documents.
But that's why it's done in bold, factual background, and then the, and his legal analysis is done in a whole different font from what I used.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, you're right, it is done, it is done in bold and a slightly different font.
So where does it end? Starts there with that first.
Over there.
Where?
Right, right there.
That's the word.
Yeah, this little.
Yes, but you'll, you'll see that the, but it is bold, the thing is, I guess what Doug is saying is that the.
You missed those quotation marks, I do.
Well, it, there's not enough distinction in the font that it's obvious, that's all.
There's not, yeah, there's not enough, so perhaps, like I said.
Do you want me to italicize?
I think I italicizing it.
Or maybe put more spacing between the.
I don't wanna make them any longer than they are, I'll italic, I'll, I'll make it so that it's like, you know.
So it clearly stands out.
Italize.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's fine, that's fine.
That's why I'm going like this, I will do that, I'll change that.
Yeah, that's good, okay.
Yeah.
So then.
All right, that's fine.
I move we approve the minutes as amended.
So move, so second.
Hold on. Doug, second? Prove as.
Okay, so now, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, fine, okay, so now technically.
Oh, I can't.
She can't.
Bill, Jennifer Canton, Bill, you weren't sitting on any of these cases, so it's just the five of us.
Five, yep, that's what I got.
So, the way we have to approve minutes after talking to our attorney is that it's possible in minutes, because we elevate people, that different people are elevated, that we'll have, we'll have to, we should have, we should have six or seven people voting on the minutes.
Right.
Which is a strange arrangement, but the reality is.
Wouldn't you just do it case by case with the people that sat on that case?
Well, that's, that's what Chris suggested, is that we split them and stuff and just. Yeah.
I gotta tell my wife, because she does exactly that.
Telling you, it's the only way I can find them. He's laughing at me because I took every case.
You're color coding.
Well, I just, I at least labeled them what each case was, is in each individual folder, because as you can see, we start to get, continue from, from meeting to meeting to meeting, to meeting to meeting.
I have a stack to be higher than these.
Right, and it got ridiculous, and so I have a stack, like, you know, this thick of now, of all these folders that I've created for all the cases. But if I, but if somebody says to me, oh, no, no, that was case twenty-three fifteen, I can just go grab the folder, and it should have all of my stuff in it.
No, we're.
Regardless of what meeting we were at, as lo, you know what I would like, Kate, and I don't, I don't really wanna add to your, to my workload.
Oh, why not?
For, for twenty-twenty-three, can you send us a list of the ca, just the case number and what the decision was, it was approved or denied?
Oh, I think I have that, 'cause I did it for the report.
I've got a little, a little Excel sheet that I've.
Excel sheet would be great.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's fine.
We denied two, I think.
Maderos?
Oh, you mean, are the STRs?
No, all of our cases, like, starting with twenty-three dash one. I won't go before that.
I have another Excel sheet that I kept, this is just for STRs.
Yeah.
But I have one for all the cases upstairs, so.
Okay.
I can send that.
Okay, yeah. All righty, anybody have any other business? Okay.
Any other motion we adjourn?
So move, second.[1791.64]